I'll call the meeting to order. Let everybody get settled here a minute and organize. All right. And so next up, we have the Administrator Controller here, Al Weberberg, to start us off.
All right. Well, good morning once again. We're pleased to meet with you on the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan Project Recommendations. Just a couple of notes before we start. Just want to acknowledge this is an awkward year for a couple of reasons. First, we did change the, you did vote to change the fiscal year to October 1, which kind of shortened the timeframe to do the budget and put it on a little bit different cycle. You know, also with eight brand-new commissioners, we thought it important to not do strategic planning in January necessarily. So we do have a strategic planning session scheduled for May. And then I think to get everything on an appropriate cycle, we'd like to do another one in October because you'll kind of have the hang of how strategic planning goes. We'll plan to go over the Colby and Predictive Index results as a group. I think that was kind of fun last year when we did that. And then you'll be primed to jump into strategic planning at the end of the fiscal year, September 30, and well before January, which is now when the call for CIP comes. And so, you know, it was kind of awkward getting, I think, good input. I know one of my notes asked for input, but again, it was just kind of awkward. So we do value Commissioner input into the process, and there will definitely be a more comfortable place for that as we move forward. So today, we're going to cover the recommendations of kind of the major areas of CIP we'll present to you. Overall, we had 53 projects requested, and the total of that was $15.2 million. There are 34 projects being recommended for inclusion in the 2014 CIP budget totaling $6.9 million, supported by $6.8 million from the General Fund, the equivalent of .225 mils. It's also proposed that 10 additional projects be handled through other alternatives. And so that means we have a total of 44 projects, or actually 83% of the projects requested. So I'm not going to read this word for word, but we are going to have each area present to you based on the order that we have here. So first up, we'll have Facilities, Al Jano, and then we'll have Tim from IT, Tim Beck, and then Dan from Parks. And then we have a couple here from the Sheriff, so I think Chuck's going to take the lead. And feel free to ask questions while they're presenting. And we're ready to go. So with no further ado, Al, why don't you cover some of the Facilities projects?
Thank you.
And we do have this, there's a PDF that was in your email this morning for this, so you can follow along on that. It'd be the 2024 CIP project recommendations.
Thank you. Good morning, all. My name's Al Jano, Facilities, York Facilities Director. And unique, our department serves every other department. So it's not like we're asking just for our single department. All the requests you see from us are to serve everyone else that does all our other county functions. So Facilities Management has requests for funding for 18 projects in the 2024 CIP. 14 of these projects are being recommended for CIP funding. The remaining four projects, we look to address through needs of, the needs through alternate funding sources. Those four projects are comprised of the interior painting at our main health facility, the replacement of a utility tractor at our Human Services Complex, and also at the Human Services Complex, replacement of the AV components in Main Conference Room. Then the last one would be their Fallsburg Dam and Spillway renovation. The Health Department and Painting and the Human Services Tractor Replacement and the AV Components would be addressed within our operating budget. And then with regard to our Fallsburg Dam and Spillway renovation work, we're, right now, we're doing all the engineering and permit requesting and jumping through many, many hoops and complicated observations and engineering work to do the work in the 2024 construction season. But with regard to that dam and spillway, we feel that there are some reasonable grant opportunities to perhaps fund the necessary work in whole or in part. And we do have some time to either secure or exhaust those opportunities between now and our 2024 construction season, as we're just entering the 2023 construction season now. With that, I thank you for your continued support. It's been exemplary, and I'm happy to have any further conversation on any of our other CIP projects that you may have some questions or...
Do you have any, yeah, Commissioner Boujack?
A question about the spillway, or exactly what's being done with the spillways.
Exactly what's being done? I'm going to speak in generalities, because exactly, you better, you better pack lunch and dinner and everything, because there's just a lot to it. But essentially, the Fallsburg Dam and Spillway operation, and I'll really try to be brief with this, but the dam is, we have a dam and spillway that makes an impoundment of about 215 acres, mostly very shallow water, but it, it, it does, it does have a water impoundment. It's a beautiful feature. It's just, it's just stunning. If I had some pictures up here, you'd be impressed, and you probably wouldn't look at anything else today other than those pictures. It's just beautiful. When, when the dam was installed, it raised the river level to allow a channel of where a hydro plant exists, and it's currently producing electricity and has been for many decades. The dam and spillway operation is about 100 years old, a hair over 100 years old, and it's in, it's in good condition, but we need to, we need to plan for the future of it. To just remove it, I think, I don't, I, we never hear anyone clamoring to say, "Remove it," including Eagle. Nobody's saying, "Remove that feature," because it's been there for over 100 years now, about almost, almost 120 years or nearing that. But the dam and spillway does require some rehabilitation, and it's, it's time to do another 50-year fix to it, if you will. We estimate that to be nearly $4 million. That would, that would consist of sheet piling on the embankments, new tainer gates, refurbishing of concrete on the spillway, and add some more technology to it for automated monitoring.
Al, what? I'm looking for, I thought for almost a year that we had it coming, and ultimately... There, there's a federal, there's a regulation at the state level that says you can't use state money for this dam because it has a hydroelectric generation component, so it's under federal regulation. So we are attempting to get federal money, but one of the reasons for the ARPA holdback, this is one of the projects where if we don't get the federal money, we'd like to use ARPA money on it, so we don't have to use county tax dollars on it, so.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
And just for one more little bit of clarification is, we own the dam and spillway and the property around much of that impoundment. We do not own the channel and the hydro-producing plant. Sorry, a pretty important component, sorrys.
Who owns that?
SDS Hydropower or Eagle Creek Renewable Energy is their, is their, is their main, their sub-business is SDS Hydropower.
And are they investing in this project also?
They are actually looking to sell their ownership of this, and, and there's someone else that is interested in buying this dam. It's, STS had bought this from the previous owner about eight years ago, and it didn't really fit in their portfolio. The people that they're looking to sell it to, it definitely fits in, and there are Michigan and Wisconsin and Midwest dam operators and such. What they contribute is, the magnitude that they contribute to is enormous in operating the dam and spillway. It's hands-off to us. We don't have to staff it. They maintain it, and they're out there multiple times a day. So it takes, it takes that responsibility off of us. So that would be their contribution to it, operating.
Thank you for maintaining that. And, you know, given what we saw happen in Midland, Michigan, I think we all understand the importance of maintaining these structures and making sure that, you know, they're safe and, you know, of sound for operation. I live on the Thornapple River. We have several dams on the Thornapple River, and, you know, looking at those same, you know, issues and trying to manage those particular structures. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Woodin, did you have a question?
Um, no, I'll go back to the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman.
I just want to say, looking at this, it's a big list of projects, but so much thanks to you, Al, and your team. You always do a great job with all of these things, not only just the, the way the facilities turn out, but also keeping an eye on, you know, the taxpayer dollar, and so I just want to say thanks.
You're welcome. On behalf of the team, they obviously just have me here for the pretty face.
Obviously.
Obviously. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none? Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Al?
No, I just want to reiterate the thank you for your always continued support. That's, that's, that, we couldn't do any of it without your support, so thank you.
Perfect. And next up, we have Tim Beck from Information Technology. Thanks for spending time with us this morning, Tim.
Good morning. I'll try to be brief this morning, since we don't have a lot to submit. But IT has submitted, bringing forward two projects this year. One is a server refresh, which is a general lifecycle replacement for some aging hardware we have in one of our data centers, particularly or specifically, I should say, our database environment. So we tend to stand up new databases like it's an Olympic sport sometimes, and so we've just simply outgrown capacity as some of our needs have changed. So that is one. The second one, Project 49, is what we call fiber connectivity improvements or enhancements. And this is really not so much a lifecycle thing, but as opportunities present themselves to improve county connectivity between facilities. We try to maintain geodiverse redundancy between our county facilities, which means that we have fiber connectivity through two separate paths that don't follow the same route for redundancy, resiliency, and to meet some of our regulatory requirements. And so as opportunities present themselves through abandoned conduit, other construction going on, we try to take advantage of that to improve that connectivity. So you'll see that there reflected in, in Project 49. And then lastly, as long as I'm up here, my friend Andy Thalhammer is here from 17th Circuit Court, but Project 112, the e-filing, that one I've been asked to comment on just because it is an IT tech-heavy project, but this really furthers their advancement into paperless, going paperless in their office from a workflow perspective, from digitizing files, from court processes, all of the automation things that they want to do and we're supporting heavily. That's my comments on, on e-filing. It's, it's where they need to go, and they are lagging behind kind of the rest of the county just due to the sheer weight of things they do. So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, any questions? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you so much, Tim, for all you do for the county. You literally keep the lights on here for us, and, you know, these investments are, you know, definitely needed. And as far as the e-filing systems, I work for GE Aviation, and we went through this process in the year, like, 2000 or so. Took us 10 years to get everything converted over to a complete electronic. So an important process, a time, it's going to take a long time to totally go paperless, but I highly encourage the county heads in that direction.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. And even though it's an annual request here, don't think we're going to be done in a year. I think that's the important takeaway. I wish we could be, but it's, it'll be a multi-year process for sure.
And we're making progress, because last year, you would have had a pile of paper today sitting on your desk, so.
All right. Commissioner Peckla.
Madam Chair. Tim, I appreciate the opportunity with Project Number 49 to sort of find spaces to backfill where you've got conduit, empty conduit. Do we have a county-wide fiber plan that sort of looks years ahead at the ways in which we could create robust planned infrastructure rather than just relying on what comes to us ad hoc?
Yes, yes and no. And I hate that answer, but, but that's the reality of it, because a lot of the fiber connectivity we have between facilities is dependent upon other people's plans. We try to leverage cost and collaborate where we can. So the KISD, or I'm sorry, the New North County Property is a great example of that. We're leasing some fiber in partnership with KISD to get up to that facility. So it just, it's not, even if you look 50 years out, it's probably not cost feasible for us to own that fiber, right? So, you know, I don't think, we certainly don't have a 10-year plan. It's really based on where do we need to get, what collaborations exist to reduce costs and get us where we need to go, and maintain flexibility in the future, to either offload that fiber to somebody else if we need to. If we get a different county facility or sell one, or whatever the case might be, we want to maintain that flexibility. So, does that answer your question? Okay.
Sharon MacLeod.
Chair, just a quick question. So the fiber, the system refresh, is that like just an annual sort of expenditure that needs to take place in order to keep the systems up to date, or is that just a one-time thing?
It's, it's pretty much a five-to-seven-year plan. Request, I should say, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. It looks like next up, we have Dan DeLuft from the Parks Department.
Dan DeLuft with the Parks Department. So this year, we submitted six CIPs for consideration. Currently, there's four under, recommended under the CIP and two under alternate funding. Just so you know, the Parks Department routinely looks at all of our facilities, parking lots, playgrounds, things like that. We're on a, roughly a 20-year replacement cycle for asphalt and playgrounds. So you will be seeing, those of you that have been on the board have seen us routinely ask for these. Brewer Park is really a big one for us. It's a huge soccer complex down on 84th Street, so we're trying to get ahead on that one. So that's why you'll see such a big price tag with that. And then playgrounds at Johnson Park, just another replacement that's due. Lowell Regional Greenspace, Project 53, there was two life leases on that property out there. They have since moved out of the structures, and so we're... And then Project 55 is Kaufman Golf Course, our bunker improvements. We're proposing to pull all the existing sand out, line the bunkers, and then add new sand to improve the playability. That, thanks for your support. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Dan? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Dan, for all you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dan, for all you do for the parks. Looking forward to seeing Caledonia River Bend Park on here and Caledonia Two Rivers Parks on this list for improvements. How soon might we see something like that?
So I can, I can share a little bit of ARPA, if you're not aware. So we were granted 15 million in ARPA funding. So some of that ARPA funding will go towards Thornapple and Two Rivers Park as well.
Yeah, Commissioner Peckla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dan, when we think about things like Item 51, the playground replacement at Johnson Park, are, are we able to participate in a competitive or structured bidding process, sort of similar to the MyDeal for vehicles or things like that? Is there any sort of collaborative bidding environment that works for playgrounds? I'm thinking in particular that we have other municipalities that might benefit from some countywide collaboration on equipment bids for playgrounds too, and I don't know if anything like that exists.
We do use kale in the purchasing department, and that is something that they, they will vet for us, and then it will, you know, put out, request proposals out, the amount that we have, and...
Okay, great.
We should say we are part of the state purchasing system, and so to the extent that those items are on there, then it's like a statewide bid, but I don't know if they are or not.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question on Kaufman. Will that, is that estimate to replace, do the work on all the bunkers, or is that select bunkers on the course?
That is all of them.
All of them, okay.
And potentially relocating a few of them.
All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner MacLeod.
Chair, so just a quick question. So I just am trying to understand the reasoning for the park enhancements at Millennium not being prioritized in this specific request. Just trying to understand that one. And then I guess, while you're at it, Johnson Park as well, why weren't those ones moved forward?
I believe those were identified as potentially other sources of funding that the Fiscal Services team is looking at.
So that they will, they will take place, just not from this CIP request?
I can't answer that question. Maybe Jeff can.
They're having a minimum allocated. We have Jeff here, too. He can maybe answer a few more questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hopefully you can hear me. So the Millennium Park, we had a donation given in a, in a will that provides ongoing maintenance for that, so we're going to use those funds for that particular repair, so that'll just be paid for out of a different source other than capital. The other one, we thought for Johnson Park, it's, does, there is allocated ARPA money for that, so we wanted to make sure that money was spent first before it came back to capital. So we were kind of waiting for some of the bids and stuff on that, and then if there is still needed money, they'll have to come back to this particular body, if that makes sense.
Okay, yep, that makes sense. I think that would be helpful, maybe moving forward, to just maybe note that in the actual little summary that's provided. That way, we'll just know.
Commissioner Woodin.
Chair, a lot of my question had to do with, with Commissioner MacLeod's, but I was at least going to ask one question about Brewer Park and the paving maintenance. Are we utilizing pervious pavement there, or is it non-pervious?
Currently, it's non-pervious.
Do we know what the cost delta would be to utilize pervious?
I couldn't answer that. I could look into that for you, though.
And given its location, I don't believe it's connected to any municipal sewer system, correct? So are we having to retain stormwater at the site, or is it connected to some storm sewer system?
There is currently stormwater detention there.
Retention there, okay. The main thought was, you know, if this has a lifetime of 20 years, one, if we're already doing stormwater retention on site, even if it comes at a cost premium, it may also help with ongoing maintenance. Pervious pavement usually doesn't, is, at least in my, as it's been explained to me, is a little less susceptible to potholes and other damage from the elements because of its pervious nature. So just wondering, have we ever figured out what the, have we ever looked at this and what the, the cost premium to pursuing pervious over non-pervious?
For parking lots, the Parks Department has not. We have done some pervious sidewalks with concrete in the past. That's something we could look into.
Thank you. And then, you know, I was wondering, I was wondering if we can at least get a broader update on how we are with park restrooms and expanding park restrooms and also making sure that we're winterizing more of them. That's been a, that's been a board initiative for quite some time, and just wondering where we're at in that, in that progress, at least so we can update some of our newer members.
Yeah, I can give a quick update on that. So as part of the ARPA funding and the Grand River Greenway, we have Johnson Park, Chief Hazy Cloud, and Lowell Regional identified as trailheads, so those restrooms would, will be heated for your owners. And then also, part of the development process at Thornapple, any new facility that we construct, we'd be adding heat to those.
Wonderful.
And then Millennium Park, we, if you remember, we put that out to bid a year ago. Prices came back. Put that back out, and the prices are open to start to fall on that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That is great news. Commissioner MacLeod, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just had another quick question on the playground. So I, I wasn't able to look through all of your Park, Parks website, but are any of the enhancements or repairs that are being done helping ensure that the playground equipment is accessible for, for kids of all abilities? I just wanted to make sure that that was okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Is there anything else that you need to add at all?
That's your time.
Yeah. Thanks for your presentation and the information and getting those restrooms in order. I know previous Commissioners will also appreciate that, so thank you. All right. Next, we have the Sheriff's Department, and we have Chuck DeWitt, our UnderSheriff. Thanks for joining us today, Chuck.
Good morning, everyone. I'm standing in for the Sheriff, who's on a well-deserved vacation, so, so we, our staff submitted a total of 33 projects. Now, that encompasses not only our current year, which has 19 projects, but an additional 14 in years to come. 12 are being recommended through the CIP process, while there's five additional that are being recommended through alternative means of funding. In total, just under $6.5 million, of which, again, 3.15 is being funded through the CIP or being recommended through the CIP. I'm not going to go through all 19 projects. I think I'm standing between you and lunch, so I'll take a few highlights and then questions from there. In the jail, we have the jail, the kitchen dishwasher replacement. It's badly needed. One, it's old, it's time to replace, but in addition to that, it's, it's current use is strictly for the use of washing our trays. The proposed replacement will actually do all of our equipment within the kitchen. In addition to that, it's going to help break down the materials that are still on the trays, and when you serve 1.2 million meals a year, you can see it would be a huge benefit and much needed. Moving on, Project 83, the Axon Body Camera, that's actually through a, it's actually be funded through an alternative source, however, it is an important part of the Sheriff's Office. So Axon is our vendor that supplies our body cameras, our in-car cameras, as well as tasers. You'll see it's a big, a big price tag, but it's one that the public is definitely supportive of wanting to know what our officers are doing on a daily basis. Some of the costs are attributed to our continued expansion of the body cams. We're going well beyond now into our other divisions, other than just road patrol, and we are excited to be able to continue that relationship. Next, if we can go to Project 87. Several years ago, we had, actually, we've gone through a couple of different projects with our dispatch center, as our dispatch center continued to grow. It was still within our footprint, but as we took over new space, the, the air needs changed, and as a result of that, we need to do some upgrades with our HVAC system. So, one, this will improve not only with the air quality, but also the noise that our staff are trying to overcome as they're trying to listen and talk to callers that are at times having to be very quiet as they're talking to our 911 staff. And then last, on my list anyways, is the sewage processing system. So the jail has a large volume of water that goes through its, its pipes every day. We don't always get cooperation from those that are staying within our cells, and sometimes food is put into the drain, sometimes clothing and other items are put in the drain. We've made efforts to try to limit that through other CIPs that have come through this committee. This is continuing to enhance it. It's an initiative that, quite honestly, is coming from the Grand Rapids that is needing and asking us to continue to monitor what's going through the drains, and it is needed. So this project would address what the city is looking for and at the same time, help with the overall system. And unless there's additional questions on other projects, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Any questions for the UnderSheriff? Yeah, Commissioner Hennessy.
Let me just ask, I think I know the answer, though. Are any of these projects possibly fundable, could be funded under the millage that's assessed for the Sheriff?
So maybe Jeff or Marvin. There are projects that do qualify because a number of them are coming from the jail. I think there's a process that does take place, that millage money may come into the General Fund and offset some of that, but it would still be encompassed within the CIP process.
But, okay, let me see if I follow that. Then it would mean that you, you'd be using it as some funding stream other than just general funds?
Yes, there are other additional funds outside of the General Fund that would be part of the projects. So we got, some of these are being rolled into our operating budget, some are being funded perhaps through ARPA, and other projects being looked at through the IT Department, and the jail millage is considered as one of those funding sources. and the jail millage is considered as one of those funding sources.
Yeah, it's particularly thinking the sewer system is being, you know, applicable to the building and the millage.
Good morning. So, there's approximately $20 million, give or take, that comes into the general fund from the correctional detention millage each year, and not directly one-for-one, but indirectly it supports the sheriff's, not just the sheriff's correctional facility, but the juvenile correctional facility capital projects. We don't do a one-for-one, we don't fund them in the correctional detention millage fund, we fund them out of the CIP fund, which comes from the general fund, which is also supported by the correctional detention millage, to the tune of $20 million a year.
Right, so, so the money's transferred into the general fund, and then it's part of a pool that pays for the CIP. So the origination of it is both from general fund dollars, but also from the special millage dollars for the correctional facility.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodin.
Not so fast, Marv. And just to confirm, just because I was the stubborn student who didn't understand this a few years ago, the main reason we do it that way is to allow this to still go through the centralized CIP process and streamlining the evaluation of all of the capital projects, not just the sheriff's CIP.
That's correct.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other questions? Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for giving Commissioners the opportunity to tour the jail. Looking at this list and having gone through the jail and seeing the operation firsthand, I was in the kitchen where you were asking to put this new washing system. I really think that as Commissioners, our highest responsibility, health, safety, and welfare, certainly the Kent County Sheriff's Department falls right at the very top with safety. So, providing the best facilities we can to keep not only those who are incarcerated safe and properly housed, but the people who have worked there, you know, in a, in a facility that is first-class and operating as it should. You know, appreciate you looking at these on an annual basis, and then coming to us and letting us know that these are priorities, and, you know, it's in the best interest to support the Kent County Sheriff's Department with these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question, clarification about the millage. So does all of the millage amount go into the general fund, and then it gets dispersed from, to the capital improvement? Or does a portion of it go to sheriffs?
We'll let Marvin handle that.
Yeah, he's on his way up.
Thank you, Marvin.
Good morning, again. So, the majority of the annual funding that comes in does go to the general fund to support the operations of the correctional facility and the juvenile detention facility, but there also is a portion that is used to support debt service on those facilities.
Okay.
So that comes out first, and then the balance goes into the general fund to support those.
Okay, do you know about the breakdown? I'm just curious for my own, you know, just thought process of how it all works. Do you know about the amount that goes into the general fund and the amount that goes to the department?
The amount that goes into the general fund is approximately $20 million a year.
Okay, and do you know the amount that goes into...
Goes into a central pool, so the operations for the correctional facility are supported out of the general fund as well as juvenile detention. It doesn't support the operations in their entirety, but it does support them to the $220 million.
Okay, and that's probably the majority of the millage, then?
Sorry.
Is that the majority of the millage?
That's about the annual amount collected, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, that answers my question.
After, there's a chunk taken off the top, like I said, to pay debt service first, then the balance goes to support operations.
Okay, thank you.
Marvin, what's that amount that comes off the top for debt service?
Yeah, I don't have it to memory, but I can look real quick and come back up here. I have it on my, on my computer, so...
Yeah, I'm just curious of how it just works, so, thank you.
All right, any more questions regarding the, yeah, Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. The body cameras, in-car cameras, I know one of the challenges when we first started putting body cameras on every deputy is FOIA requests and are very labor-intensive to work through. Do we have the, do you all have the necessary support, whatever's needed, to process those when they come through, and are we good there?
No. So, yes, it is very intensive. So for every officer that responds to a scene, they have their body camera, but within the car, there's actually three cameras that are also recording at the same time. And so, imagine a chaotic scene, there may be three, four, five officers that are showing up on that scene, and when that FOIA request comes in and they're asking for video, you then have to start multiplying, and every single one of those videos has to be watched by one of our staff to look for things that are private in nature, which then require redaction. And once they're found on one camera, they then have to go to the other three to make sure that that soundbite, that picture is also redacted. So, we are continuing to work with downtown, with HR, with the Administrator's Office, identifying the best model for addressing that. We have added, since the body cameras were put into play, but we're probably not quite there yet either.
All right, any other questions? Marvin, do you have a figure for us?
Annual amount of debt service is just under $4 million, approximately $3.8 million. And when we do the operating budget, you'll get more of an explanation on this fund, and you'll see all the different inflows and outflows as well.
Thank you, as a new Commissioner.
Yep, yep. That'll be in the next phase of the budget process, but you'll get a detailed presentation on that at that time.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Any questions for anyone else who spoke? All right, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, just one final comment would be that we are going to a five-year capital improvement plan this year. The board would only approve the first year of that each year, and certainly years two, three, four, and five can change, but we think it's important, it can kind of give departments hope as far as where their item is coming up. And then also, I think that we do get extra points in the credit rating process if we do have a five-year capital improvement plan, so that's another good reason to do one. So that detail is in your PDF, so...
All right. Any further questions? Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment? Please state your name, and you've got three minutes, which I know you know how to use efficiently, right?
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones, I stay at 967 Tamarack Avenue Northwest. First of all, I'd like to give full support to our Sheriff's Department. I believe whatever capital they need, or whatever they need to make the Sheriff's Department better and sanitary, and to be able to wash their dishes. I used to be a dishwasher at Red Robin's, and so I spent a lot of time washing dishes, so it's cool to know that they'll have a better dishwasher to wash all of the dishes. I'm just, honestly, here just because I seen you guys had a work session, and I just wanted to spend time in the Kent County Commission Hall, to be honest. I just wanted to check the info and just learn as much as I can about what our local government is doing, so I really don't have like a lot of public comment. I was just really here to observe, see what the county is doing, and see where the county funds is going, because a lot of people care about where government spends their funds. I care about where my local government and county government does with their funds, and it looks like you guys are doing good things to serve our Kent County and our Sheriff's Department and our other entities across Kent County. So I definitely commend you guys on the work, and that's what I was saying, when you guys had that other $9 million of ARPA funding, that you guys distribute that to projects, to new projects, to innovative projects. Some of the projects that you guys gave ARPA funding to historically are organizations that have been here for years, for decades, but I like to see investment in new innovations that could possibly change the trajectory of our county. You never know. You never know whose ideas is really going to really be able to change. I know my ideas are going to change Kent County for real. I show up, I'm always here, I'm always speaking to you guys, I put my ideas out there on every platform, I speak boldly, courageously, and bravely about the things that I truly do, and I believe I can do it, and I have the strength of perseverance. I think that people forget how perseverance and a human spirit is. As I was reading a book from Commissioner Poncet, they talk about perseverance. If it's one person that knows about adversities and perseverance, it's me. I brought a gun to school and let it, I brought a gun to school, had articles about me, and led my team to a state championship, and changed the whole trajectory of my high school, and I made a lot of people proud, and those kids, a decade of kids now, that was 10 years ago, I feel old, but I know I'm not old yet, but a decade ago, and I still inspire kids today that go to the juvenile detention school, Lighthouse Academy, and so, I'm just really proud of the work I'm doing, and another decade later, I'll be 38, I'll be 38 years old, and I'll look back and see that I changed Kent County, and I know I'll be able to change the economy, the economic growth, I know I've been able to print houses, I know I've been able to do a lot of things for our Kent County, and bridge the gap between police and community relations, and reduce the amount of people and students and youth and teenagers that go to the Kent County Jail so they're not washing dishes.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to comment? Seeing none, next item is miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous? And I'll speak at once. Did you raise your hand, Commissioner Pakla? No, okay. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.